Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our Wednesday, July 24th, regular council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 8:59 a.m. And I'll ask everyone to stand for the singing of our national anthem this morning. Are there any additions to the agenda this morning?
Not from administration, Madam Mayor.
You from council? Do have a very packed agenda this morning. Is there a member of council that would like to adopt the July 24th, 2024 regular meeting of council minutes? Counselor Kamana, thank you very much. All in favor? That is carried. Any corrections or amendments to the July 10th, 2024 regular meeting of council? Is there a member of council that would like to adopt the July 10th, 2024 meeting of council? Thank you very much. Counselor McGee? All in favor? That is carried. We have no proclamations this morning, no public hearings. We do have one delegation this morning. We have Tristan here this morning, and we'd like to give a big shout out and a congratulations to Tristan. Thank you very much for coming. You were the recipient of our Roger Coles Memorial Grant a little while back, and we hear that you won silver in the Canadian Arm Wrestling Federation, that you traveled all the way to Sydney, Nova Scotia to compete. And we just wanted to say thank you, congratulations, and that's pretty exciting. So we wanted to celebrate with you this morning. So great job. And we were hoping, if it's okay with you, that you'd like to get a picture with council and present you with a little certificate. Is that okay with you? Okay, wonderful. Absolutely. Oh, wow, that's fantastic. So you went all the way to Nova Scotia last year when you won silver, and then you went to, was it Nova Scotia again? Oh, to Quebec. Wow, and you won gold. Wow, you are a champion. That's pretty amazing. Great job. Does anybody here want to have a little arm wrestle maybe and see? Well, great job. What a great way to be a leader in that sport and to take it to gold. We're very, very proud of you. So thank you for coming today. And if you're okay with it, we'll get a little picture down here in front of the council. That would be great, yeah. Hope to see you back for next year. I'd like to do presentation of this little certificate of recognition that said, great job, and you were the champion, and we're so proud of you. Some things for talking. So how many medals do you have now, Tristan? In total? Yeah, it must be a lot. It must be a lot, Nationals. So you compete locally, provincially, and nationally, then? Wow. Oh my goodness. Wow, you are going to be a star athlete, definitely. And what kind of things do you do to train? Okay. That's pretty fantastic. Well, we really appreciate you coming in today and taking a moment, and we just want to say congratulations again. We don't expect you to stick around for the rest of council. It can get a little bit boring, so you probably have better things to do, maybe go and train and spend the day with your little brother there, but thank you for coming in. Hey, take care. That's fantastic. It's nice to see when we have a look at all the community grants and all the athletes and individuals that we support. Enjoy the rest of your day. Bye. Yeah, very nice. So we do have a little bit of business arising from delegations. The delegations were from our last week's Governance and Priorities meeting. We shut it down a little bit early. So we did have three delegations. The first one was Connection Coaches. Then we had Eagle Point's Blue Rapids Council Annual Report. And then also, we had QB Investment. So I'm just going to kind of go through each of them. We'll make a decision if there's any action or, because there was a request and ask for each of these, and then we'll kind of do a little bit of a roundtable and have some discussion on if there's any action there. So the first was Connection Coaches. This is the one that I was thinking now that I needed a copy of. So this was, do you have a copy of that, Wally? Oh, perfect, thank you very much. Oh, you've got it. Okay, great, thank you. So there was a funding request that came in for full-time positions and part-time positions. The ask was for $75,000 to help support this program continue. I believe that there was provincial funding in place that will be there till the end of the year, and then they're looking for funding for January to sometime, maybe in the fall of next year, to support this program. This program is a program that supports high school needs on a daily basis, keeping 20 to 30 kids at school, engaging and attempting their academic work, filling a gap with most at-risk students connected, and providing a sense of belonging to our building. So discussion on this for the ask. Go ahead, Counselor Clark.
So does, do we know, does FCSS grant funds to this group? Family Wellness Program? Okay, okay.
Okay, so the family wellness. So we have a CSRO officer that is part of, is it just Frank Matic High School? So it's all Wildrose School Division, and we fund a portion of that as well as the wellness worker. So this is an additional service that, on top of the other two. Okay. Okay, okay, perfect. Go ahead, Counselor Sheriffs.
Is this something that could be cost shared with the Brazzo County?
Yeah, I believe, I can't remember if they were presenting or not to Brazzo County.
I don't think we asked, but.
Yeah, I think there's always the option of, you know, everything, yeah.
Yes, putting the cost.
Being potential. Counselor Evans, do you have a question?
I just, I thought they'd mentioned at the presentation that they were going to be approaching, I don't know if they said specifically Brazzo County, but it sounded like they were going to be looking at other alternatives too. So I think maybe I just assumed Brazzo County was going to be one place they were going to stop.
I remember the lady mentioning that she's approaching businesses for funding, but I don't remember her mentioning, so I'm not sure. Yeah?
What's everyone thinking? Do you have anything to add, Lola?
I'm not sure if they're approaching Brazzo County either.
Okay.
I would presume so.
Yeah.
But yeah, I spoke to the thoroughly Ferris yesterday just to get some clarification on this program, and they are looking for funding from January 1st of 2025 to get them until the end of June.
Okay, end of June.
The pilot project will be over at the end of December. If they don't renew it, then likely the program will end.
Yeah, and I know that there was an ask to Wildrose School Division, and that was declined for that ask. One of the things that, and what was her name again? Tessa. One of the things that Tessa had mentioned is that even just bringing this forward and creating the awareness that this is being offered, and, you know, there is that advocacy piece. If it was a pilot project through the Minister of Education, then, you know, there is that advocacy piece that we can be writing a letter of support to say that, you know, we're feeling that, you know, there is a need. Would this be, you know, would there be an interest of continuing to run this program and send in the support letters, right, to? Go ahead, Counselor Evans.
Yeah, I'd be in support of advocacy efforts on their behalf, but in my mind, it's, you know, it's well worthwhile. They're doing a lot of good work. Don't get me wrong, I just think it's, it's not something that we should be funding as the town. I think it's a slippery slope if we start moving into the responsibility of the, you know, Minister of Education. So as good a program as it is, that would be my feelings as well. We just advocate on their behalf, but don't directly fund. I just think it's one of those things that's kind of out of our lane, if you will.
Thank you for that. Counselor Kamana?
Thank you, good morning. Yeah, I would totally agree with Counsel Evans' comments. Hence, may I make a motion?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that we support them with advocacy as well as connect with Brazzo County and see if they would like to come on board with advocacy piece for them as well.
So not funding financially, just the advocacy, the letter of support or something?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Did you get that down, Ms. Thompson? Okay, thank you. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? Counselor McGee?
So I agree with Counselor Evans, Kamana, that if we start, it's never going to stop. And Wildrose School Division made a decision to not continue the program for whatever reason that was, even though it's good work. Their budgets are probably less tight than ours, and I really think that this is the MLA's job, and so the advocacy would go to the MLA, minister, and so forth. And I think as Counselor Evans suggested, it's, they do good work, and the marginal students are, you know, will cost in the future. So I do think it's the school and Wildrose School Division that needs to be challenged a little on this. Thanks.
Yeah, absolutely. I think you're absolutely right. So there is a motion on the floor. I'll ask, all in favor? That is carried. So the direction is there. Next up was Eagle Point Blue Rapids Council Annual Report, which was Sandra had presented to us, and they did receive funding, which secured some of their programs and plans over the next three years, which was good news to hear. So the only ask from them was the letter of support in regards to the designation of the Canadian Heritage River that was made earlier this year. So this would be a joint letter of support going from Brazzo County, Eagle Point Blue Rapids, and the Town of Drayton Valley. So thoughts and comments on that? Counselor Clark?
Yeah, can, just refresh my memory. If you wanted a letter just expressing our position on the Heritage Rivers.
Yeah, so the decision was already made. So the letter is saying, as the announcement of the North Saskatchewan River being designated a Canadian Heritage River was made earlier this year, Brazzo County, Eagle Point Blue Rapids, and the Town of Drayton Valley would like to jointly voice our dissatisfaction with the pronouncement. After hearing the presentations during the public consultation process, investigating the Canadian Heritage River System website, and researching news articles, we could not find any reason to seek out this designation. The title does not provide a level of service or provision that could be, could not be achieved without the designation. As cited in the Wise Use Public Survey, 9% of those surveyed cited the designation as not being needed, as well as a gateway to further bureaucracy that could potentially limit river access. We align with this viewpoint as documentation, and the CHRS website both reference items like river management, stewardship, conservation, and governance in very ambiguous terms. Lack of transparency and clear communication is a considerable challenge that the CHRS faces. The potential for future federal government overreach because of this is significant. It would be helpful to receive assurance from the CHRS that economic and/or recreational activities on the North Saskatchewan now or in the future will not be restricted due to this designation. So this was something that we did support, so it's now that it's gone through. We talked about that consultation, we talked about that why, right? So I can get behind the letter, definitely. Yeah, are we needing a motion then for the letter two as well? Mr. Ferris?
I think that would help, for sure.
Okay. Sure. Go ahead.
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion that we create a letter to CHRS, a letter that's written and ready to go, and signed by you and Brazzo and Eagle Parks. So be my motion.
Thank you very much for that. Thank you for the motion. Comment, question, debate? Counselor Kamana?
Sorry, I was just wondering, that letter, does it explain that we would like to know more about the designation? I guess the part of the problem is that, the first part is that they didn't properly consult, in my mind, with us or the municipalities around there, around the river. And the second piece is that information out there regarding this designation is not very clear. What does that mean? So if we can get more clarity, I don't know if this is good or bad, because I don't know what it is, so.
So we did sign, oh, do we remember? We did sign maybe a couple letters already trying to kind of shut this down earlier? So it's been kind of on our radar for at least a year, I would say, right? So maybe we could bring forth those letters again, just to kind of remind you of what the process was and things like that, if that helps?
Right, yeah. Our letter said we don't support this initiative, right? That's what we said.
Yeah.
So even though then it went through.
Yeah.
But I still don't know what it means in the ground. So if we can get more information, then maybe, you know, like I said, it could be good, could be bad, I don't know.
Okay, Counselor Clark?
Last question is, who's the letter to?
So the letter is to the chairman and CHRS Board of Directors.
Right, so who?
They lead on this.
Who designated the waterway as a heritage? Is it the Department of Fisheries and Oceans?
No.
Environment?
Have to go back and find the letters. We'd have to go back and find the letters, yeah.
I guess my question is, just do we, do you kind of CC the federal ministers on there and provincial ministers as well, just so they know we're not happy with it?
Yeah.
So it's not just going to this black hole?
Yeah, and there would have been the CCs, right? Whether it been the MLA, would have been the province, would have been all that. So yeah, it's definitely something we can ask, right? You can ask Sandra, who's it going to, who's going to be CC'd, who will all see the letter, right, to make it. Okay, so there's a motion on the table to get behind and get the letter sent. We'll look into our past letters and ensuring that everyone who needs to be CC'd on the letter is included as well. So Alaska, all in favor? That is carried. Do you have a copy of the letter, Wally?
I don't have a copy of it here.
Okay, I have it here. We'll use that. Next up is QB Investment. They presented to us. I do feel this is more of an administrative thing, but any comments or question from council? On this? Counselor Sheriffs?
I agree, it's up to administration to maybe look into it a little bit deeper, but so far, I think he said they only have two municipalities, it's fairly new.
One, yeah.
Or one, yeah, I'm not sure if we're ready to jump on anything with our finances yet.
Do you have any comments, Ms. Thompson, on this?
My only comment is that sometimes seeking out some of these, like switching providers and stuff, the process itself can be really time-consuming, which is with our capacity right now, sometimes we don't investigate very far, only because we don't have the time to do it, and it takes a lot of resources. But I do think that it'd be worth just seeing what's, I think from an administrative point, it's just nice to know what's out there, just to make sure that we're making the right decision with our money, and it's just an important part of our finances. So I'm not, I think I will have a further conversation with them, just to learn more about what they do. They only have two municipalities, but they do have, the firm itself is established, it's just, they just created this new municipal portfolio. So I think I'll have a conversation with them, but just, that's, we'll start there and see if it takes us anywhere. But yeah, it's, sometimes it's a capacity thing as well.
Perfect, thank you. Counselor Kamana?
Yeah, thank you, and I agree with that. Just one interesting piece that came out, of course, from that was the Canadian Investment Protection piece that we talked about. I'm not, I'm 100% sure that, you know, we've already looked at it, but it's, I think, regarding entities and how many entities we have, and up to a million that's protected, right? So hopefully, we've kind of set up the same way where, if everything goes south, which is very highly unlikely, but to be protected, right? Thank you.
Okay, Counselor McGee?
Just one point, I think when we talked about the rate, the interest, we're not far off of, as little as, you know, short points than what we're receiving now and what, and the change, didn't seem very logical to me either, so.
Okay, perfect. Did you have something to add, Ms. Thompson? No? Okay, perfect. So it's fair to say we'll leave it with administration to explore a little bit further and see if that's somewhere we want to go, and we'll hear back. Okay, perfect. Thank you very much for that. That is it from business arising from our Governance and Priorities delegations last week. We'll jump into our decision items. First up is 9.1, Town of Drayton Valley and Area Education Management Plan. Mr. Kundi Nambeari this morning. Good morning and welcome.
So dating back to January 9, 2024 workshop discussion with council, it was proposed that administration take back a direction to build an education management plan, hoping that this will be a framework for what the education portfolio might look like for the Town of Drayton Valley. So in doing that, we went ahead and reached, crafted something that we thought we should bring forward to council for comments and discussion, to sort of see if we're heading down the right direction, and, you know, just get our feedback from council. And just to start things off, as you go through this plan, you will notice three major themes of discussion. An approach to education, the CETC Building Utilization Plan, and the Zero Fee Tuition Program. And within those sections, we do touch on certain elements and certain discussion pieces. And that thing you also notice is that each section contains a detailed list of project constraints, project proposals, and there's all project success criteria that we would hope to manage as we go through each of these phases, each of these three sections. And so when we starting off, I guess, with our vision, mission, and values, so the vision we crafted for this education portfolio is to be a regional hub of advanced learning and professional development. And this will be coupled with a mission to foster vibrant and accessible educational environment in Drayton Valley. And this will be guided by the values of being community-driven, accessible, collaborative, and as well sustainable. And as we progress to, I guess, the first section of the education management plan, where we talk about our approach to education, the first thing we just really wanted to highlight in this section was just a quick snapshot of what enrollment numbers look like within Drayton Valley and the area from 2022 to 2024. And so, as you can basically see with the graph on the left, that's pink, so that basically highlights healthcare aid academy enrollment numbers. And in total, it's 41 enrollments, right, that have basically passed through the CETC, which is really quite impressive. But then the other thing to note is how there are also other interests that we're seeing from the community. So we're seeing about 13 enrollments through early learning and childcare, you know, eight through social work, and that's through the Northern Lakes Program. And from there, we're also seeing a total of 47 as well through the University of Alberta Continue Education, which highlights, you know, nine through social media, and I believe 16 in leadership-related programs as well through this program. And so for us, in highlighting all these enrollment numbers, what we mostly just wanted to speak to is just the diverse set of interests we're seeing from Drayton Valley and the region when it comes to their choice of education, which goes beyond just trades and healthcare, right? And in just looking at this, you know, just quick chart that we made, you know, in looking at all those enrollment numbers from 2022 to 2024, we can see that, you know, 66% are representative of programs outside of that scope, right, of focus. And so that's something for us that sort of stood out quite promptly, and it's something that we just wanted to better cater to. And moving from there, we did also just want to touch on partnership development. And so, as most of you are aware, we currently partner with Campus Alberta Central, the University of Alberta Continue Education, the University of Calgary, starting this September for their Registered Nurse Program, we have the Healthcare Academy and Northern Lakes College. And so in going through all these partnerships, it is quite impressive in that just through the University of Alberta alone, you know, they boast over 200-plus courses and 40-plus programs, not to mention Northern Lakes, that has, you know, all these great programs for trades and apprenticeship with healthcare courses as well through the Healthcare Academy. And so this is a vast list of options, right, for students, which is really great. But also just left us wondering, you know, if there could be other ways to strengthen these partnerships we already have, and sort of focus on enhancement piece that we sort of discussed in our first workshop. And then the other question really was, could there be? And then the other question really was there, uh, was could there be other valuable forms of partnerships outside of traditional post-secondary institutions, right? As you can see here, they're mostly just PSIs, right? And so based on these three discussion pieces, we then came forward with just a, a few, you know, project proposals. And, uh, so the first was to broaden our education areas of focus beyond just healthcare and trades. And the second was to establish a partnership development approach that is reciprocal and as well enhances whatever partnerships we currently have and have established. And then the third is just to look beyond traditional PSIs and try to see the benefit of having community and industry partnerships as well, right? And so those types of partnerships, they would come in different forms. They might not be a monetary, um, incentive to some of these partnerships, but then there could be a complimentary incentive in, or a strategic incentive in these sort of partnerships, right? And then from there, uh, of course, you know, we don't want to abandon all that's been done for healthcare and medical professionals, right? And so the fourth piece really was to continue on that retention and recruitment piece for, uh, healthcare and medical professionals. And so this sort of finishes up a summary of the first section that we sort of tried to cover within the education management plan. And from there, we then, uh, just transition on to the CETC building utilization plan. And in going through this section, we mostly touch on, we, you know, a budget, a budget assessment really on twenty twenty-three figures. We then look at the current building utilization use, uh, cost recovery, and then fees and rates. And so the quick thing to note, I guess, when it comes to the budget assessment is the fact that when it comes to revenue, there are basically three categorized revenue streams for the building. The education revenue, uh, revenue that we receive strictly from the post-secondary institutions. So Healthcare Academy and Northern Lakes are the only institutions that utilize the building. And then when you look at the tenant revenue, that's strictly from the Infinity Learning and the homeschoolers. And then we can see that the largest share of revenue that we get, right, is from the event side, about forty-five percent. And so that's sort of how the revenue is structured, and we just included a flow plan that sort of shows a layout to where some of those, um, tenants are, and with the rest of the empty space, mostly just being used for events, right? And now looking on the cost side of things, we thought it would be worthwhile just looking at, you know, how our costs, um, uh, are basically assessed. And so in looking at it, we did a capital-first labor ratio, and as we can see, it's mostly capital-driven, right? So it's a capital-intensive investment, really, when it comes to CETC. And with that, of course, there are pros and there are also downsides, right, to being capital-intensive. And so it's just something what was, we just wanted to note. And from there, um, when it came to our project proposals, we mostly just wanted to highlight, um, that we would propose a repurposing and rebranding of the Clean Energy Technology Center to the Community Education and Training Center, which cleverly enough still uses CETC. And, um, within this rebranding and repurposing of the building, right? This is where we would look to be a hub for education, right? And beyond just post-secondary institutions, we started looking at, you know, the Community Learning Association. And this is why, I guess, we even started broaching discussions with the library as well and sort of seeing what sort of synergies can be had with them. We already have the Chamber of Commerce, but, you know, we, right now, we have, you know, the Visitor Center of the Matri Cultural Association as well. So there are all these community groups that have some service deliverable that we think can be complementary to what, um, the Community Education and Training Center could potentially be. And just being that regional hub and one-stop shop for all these community groups, we thought would be something quite interesting to look into. Apart from that, we do look at also, uh, looking at the revision of fees and rates specifically when it comes to events and trying to see if there's more revenue that we can generate, especially from the wedding side of things, right? Just based on some of the comparisons that we did. And then from there, we did also just take a quick look at, you know, cost recovery and just trying to revise, revise our cost recovery goal. So as it currently stands, if you remember, we made around, um, forty-five thousand in, in total, right, for the building. And so that sort of stands at a fifteen percent cost recovery percentage, which is right at the bottom, right? At the community benefit threshold of that, uh, of the, of the figure on the left. And so based on that, we thought, you know, a realistic approach really when it comes to cost recovery for us would be to try to position ourselves forward to the community slash individual benefit. So there's still a priority on community, there's element of individual benefit, and for that cost recovery is between twenty-one to fifty percent. So that would, that's what we think is more realistic approaching utilizing the CETC building, just given just how revenue works, right, when it comes to education. And, uh, moving on from there, um, the last section just mostly speaks to the zero fee tuition program. And so, um, with the zero fee tuition program, what mostly stood out to us is just how we've been dispersing these funds. And so with the chart on the left, it mostly just highlights, um, our partner, post-secondary institutions, and as well speaks to a percentage that they've been getting, uh, based on the applicants that have been coming through zero fee tuition. And so as we can see, uh, the majority, fifty-seven percent, have gone through the Healthcare Academy, thirty-eight percent through Northern Lakes College, and five percent through the University of Alberta Continuing Education. And on the right, we then thought to basically look at all the enrollments that we've had and basically do an assessment of all the people that have enrolled, how many have actually applied for zero fee tuition, right? And so for this one, you know, we basically saw from the forty-three applicants through Northern Lakes College, about, uh, twenty-two of them applied for zero fee tuition. From the forty-seven through the University of Alberta, only three applied for zero fee tuition. And with, with some good news, uh, for the Healthcare Academy, right, for all thirty-three that applied, all thirty-three, uh, for all thirty-three that are enrolled, all thirty-three applied for zero fee tuition, which is great. And for us, we just wanted to highlight this because it mostly just speaks to the awareness piece when it comes to zero fee tuition and just trying to find ways to get people to know about the program and just benefit from it. And from there, we then, uh, just came forward with some, uh, proposed, uh, uh, restructuring for what this zero fee tuition could sort of look like. And with that, we thought, uh, it would make sense to extend the program to Brazil county residents. And this is something, as you remember, that I think they even discussed at County Council. And apart from that, we thought about renaming this zero fee tuition, uh, program to the Tuition Assistance Program and as well, uh, the creation of three funding streams through this program. Um, we mostly wanted to highlight, uh, lifeguarding, early childhood education and, and the financial need stream. And each of these streams basically represent, uh, just three areas of focus for us. So for the lifeguarding, this actually came about from a discussion we had with, uh, Hans about community, uh, services. I think some years back, council approved lifeguarding, um, as a budget item through zero fee tuition, some years back. And so we thought, okay, why don't we try to integrate that back into the zero fee tuition? And for the early learning and child, and, uh, childhood education. So this for us just highlighted just how popular this program is within the region. And so in talking to Bernice and, you know, and just having a conversation around how the zero fee tuition works, you know, she, you know, basically thinks, you know, a partnership between the town and other day, other daycares could be quite beneficial in just building that portfolio. And then for the last stream, uh, for the financial need, this is where we'll try to, you know, support those people that just don't have the financial means to take on programs, right? And, um, from there, then the last, um, sort of proposal for the restructuring was, um, that the program be made available to students within Brazil and the town that are, that have enrolled for, that have, are enrolled to any Alberta post-secondary institution. So this goes just beyond our partner institutions. So if someone is enrolled through, you know, Cape Breton University, or someone is enrolled through just other universities, Nate, why don't they, you know, have a chance to actually, uh, gain access to these funds, right, if they can fit within those three streams? And, um, apart from that, you know, the other proposal was just the inclusion of academic upgrading students. And so academic upgrading is not a post-secondary program. But then it is a gateway to people going towards post-secondary programming, right? And so this was just something that we saw that was missing as a gap. And we thought, hey, you know, if you can address this low-hanging fruit, maybe this can help a lot of people. Just take that step from getting that accreditation through the academic up, upgrading, and then hopefully at some point, going towards post-secondary courses. And from there, uh, we just wanted to mention what the next steps would look like for us. And so next week, Monday, we do have a workshop in partnership with the University of Alberta. And within this workshop, we'll have stakeholders come in to have a discussion about the education plan, right? And so we're hoping to just get some feedback from those stakeholders and see which ways we can just make corrections and just basically integrate some of that feedback into the plan. And then from there, that's when we'll basically come back to council with the revised full plan that has integrated parts of that engagement for council to review and to endorse, right, or to decline whichever they see makes sense. And, uh, yeah, so this pretty much covers the education management plan. And so this was, as I said, this was just for discussion, right? So if there's anything you really want to say, or if any direction you think we should, should change, yeah, do let us know. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Any questions? Councilor Sheriffs?
I have a question, you just have a comment. I think it was a really good presentation, and I absolutely agree that we need to up our revenue for the CETC because it's, it's an expensive building to keep running. So really, good job.
Uh, Councilor Clark?
A couple of questions. One, um, with the UFC coming, do we, do we see any projected revenue there, uh, in terms of rent, or are they coming rent-free?
Um, so through, um, your worship to Councilor Clarks, in talking to the University of Calgary, we are on the understanding that, um, it will be coming as an in-kind from the town. And so this is similar to how they've done the programs in Wainwright and other communities as well, where they try to minimize costs as possible. And so for us, they were just looking for the classroom space.
Okay. Um, the next question was, um, what's the wastewater treatment company that's coming here? Dark Matter and what's?
Symbiotic?
Symbiotic, yes. Um, is there any contemplation of them going in there as well? Uh, because they, they have talked about needing space, but I don't think we've really landed on exactly where that would be, so.
Yeah, through your worship to Councilor Clark, yeah, it's, it's been a revolving discussion, right, when it comes to symbiotic. Um, and, you know, so for us, I mean, if there is space, because there will be space available, like, uh, multipurpose space that any, any person can sort of occupy. Uh, but for us, right, with the rebranding of the CETC to the Community Education Center, for us, that was more about just trying to be targeted, right, towards education? And then if there are any other things we can sort of support through that, why not?
Perfect. Okay, and then lastly, um, I think it's probably a good idea to go from zero fee to the assistance plan. I think you probably really rebrand that and really hop on that tap, tap into, into, uh, education, stuff like that, right? So, um, that's just me with my marketing hat on. But, uh, yeah, I think it's, it's probably worth a bit of a refresh there, and I think, um, and I'm all for calling something that it is, right? It's not a hundred percent zero fee, it's, the tuition assistance would be, I think, better, uh, better branding there, so. Thanks.
Thank you for that. Councilor Kamana?
Thank you. Um, Kundi, just wondering, um, as of now, how many, uh, face-to-face students, uh, are we getting at CETC?
Through your worship to Councilor Kamana, so as of now, um, we have eight students that are going through the Healthcare Academy.
Okay.
And so, so they come and utilize the building, um, whenever they can. And apart from that, you know, it varies because we do have a lot of students through Northern Lakes College that come for exam and visualization, for example, right? So they do that distance learning, and then they just come during the day, and, uh, we just basically do their invigilation with them, just so that they can get their exams done. And, you know, so give or take around ten to fifteen is what we see currently.
Okay, thank you. I agree with, uh, Councilor Sheriffs, Kamana, this is a great presentation. I'm sure you've worked hard on this. The, uh, concerns that I have is, uh, if I may, um, where I think when we started the education, uh, we wanted to make it kind of an industry for us, for the community, where there's benefit from that, uh, to the community as, as a, um, economic benefit as well. Um, so, um, I'm not sure, um, you know, again, still in discussion how we get there. And the second piece was, of course, to, uh, utilize the CETC to, uh, accommodate more students or other entities and utilize it fully. So, uh, that piece, I think we still need to figure out, um, as mentioned, you know, fifteen percent, uh, revenue. Uh, we need to increase that to the next couple of levels up, as you mentioned there. Uh, those are my concerns. As, as you mentioned, you know, this is still on the, on the, uh, discussion and progress, uh, of, of this report. So, uh, just wanted to, you know, put that out there. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just comment for myself. A fantastic job. Their, uh, plan looks really good. Uh, like, uh, Councilor Kamana said, we can see you've spent a lot of time on this. You guys did a great job. Uh, so I just have a couple of questions in going through. Um, you had mentioned that Al, um, Alberta can receive up to nine thousand dollars of bursary funds. So it says that that's approximately ninety percent of the tuition through, is it the Healthcare Academy? So we did have an ask or a request from them earlier this year. It, did all that kind of get worked out? And, and what are the current students that are going, um, I think there's eight of them, going into the next program? Are they eligible for the full ninety percent?
Yeah, through to your worship. Yeah, so within the plan, uh, we basically spoke on how there's just so much funding available, right? Whether it be through the federal government or the provincial government. So for the Healthcare Academy students, they are eligible to apply for a bursary, healthcare bursary. That's up to nine thousand dollars, which is around ninety percent, right, of how much it would cost for them to take the program. And so, um, in the beginning of this year, we did have a discussion with Healthcare Academy, and we did tell them, you know, uh, would you first look at this bursary program? And, you know, if it's not successful, then have a discussion with us about the zero fee tuition. And so they did look at the program, and unfortunately, they were, the, uh, the province was just full with so many applications. And so they ended up applying for the zero fee tuition. And so as we speak, we're just processing some of the applications we've received from some of the students, and we're just waiting to see, you know, how many people end up applying through zero fee.
Okay, so, um, when it mentions in here that they can receive up to nine thousand dollars, um, there's only a certain amount of money that the province has, and once that money's been exhausted, then it's been exhausted?
Yeah, that's exactly correct. And the point for us, the point to why we're even mentioning those figures was just to say that, um, with the way that zero fee has been working, right? Where it's all sort of been doubling down on what the province and federal government were already doing.
I feel, yeah.
Even for, uh, if you think about the Registered Nurse Program students that will be coming this September, they can get loan forgiveness, uh, between thirty thousand to sixty thousand dollars, right?
Yeah.
Which probably cover the entire, you know, cost of the program. And so.
So do they have to complete the program, and then they ask for the loan forgiveness? Is that how it works? And the, and the health care aides are eligible for that as well?
Yeah, so they will basically have to be within a rural municipality to apply for the program, which, which they would be in Drayton Valley. And so it's different between the bursary and the loan forgiveness. For the bursary, they do require you to basically, um, after finishing the program, also applying for a job. And then I guess after, once you get that job, then you can then get the full bursary. And for the loan forgiveness, it's one of those things where you can take it as you're going through the program.
Okay.
And once you're complete, right, then you can get, uh, all that money, right, to help you.
And do we work with the students, or does Healthcare Academy work with the students to apply for the loan forgiveness, if there is one, for healthcare?
So, uh, it works both ways. We do have chats, you know, with Amanda through Healthcare Academy. We have center, you know, all the information and resources, and then if the students come to us directly, you know, we have the resources ourselves, and we can just help them go through that process. And so it is something we are trying to actively just, um, advertise to them, that these things are there and available, right? And that they can get up to ninety percent of what they need. And that they can get up to ninety percent of what they need for the cost, right?
Okay, good. Uh, and just a couple more questions. Uh, I thought we had, uh, currently have an MOU signed with Community Learning.
Uh, through to your worship. So, um, Community Learning did used to be in the CTC back when Norquist was around. Um, they left and since they left, when Luke was here, they were having discussions about having an MOU, but nothing has been signed yet.
Okay, I was under the impression that it was signed because I know like when we would, um, kind of highlight our education efforts like and talk about what we're doing. One of the things that, it was Nicole at the time through Community Learning, had said, you know, let's make sure that we're not competing, we're not overlapping services and things like this. It would be beneficial to have the MOU. So that's the conversation we started. So we said, yeah, let's get that signed, um, because they do do the exam proctoring too. So I, I did see that you have that in there and I think it's an excellent way to, um, bring in some extra revenue. But I don't know if there's a way to look at what type of exams they proctor and what type that we could. So again, we're not doing that duplicating or competing, especially if we're looking at bringing them on as a partner. But I do think it's a fantastic idea to include them, right?
Yeah.
Definitely. Um, and then I'm just kind of going through. Um, okay, I already talked about that. Have my little notes in here as I was, as going, are going through. Um, so now that the county is on board and that they've sent a letter in regards to supporting the zero fee, uh, what are the next steps? And will they be sharing some of the marketing and advertising? Are we doing an announcement that, you know, county residents are now eligible or, so what are the next steps with that?
So just to clarify, I think, um, the county sent a letter about the student recreation package. So the student recreation package, that was the whole package about, um, trying to get the University of Calgary students to get a subsidized rate for a gym and aquatic membership. Uh, but yeah, so for the zero fee tuition, I do believe they had a discussion in council about it. They wanted to bring it for budget in twenty twenty-five. And so to my knowledge, they haven't committed fully yet for the funds for it. But, uh, you know, if they ever do, then of course, you know, the next steps will be to just have a discussion with them. We do have a policy in place already. So, so you know, the first starting point would probably be to cover the policy with them and to sort of see if this is something that fits into what they're looking for and then just taking things from there.
Okay, perfect. Um, and then on, I'm not sure what page, so it's page twenty-nine of our package. Uh, you do a bit of a breakdown of the operating expenses and revenue for the budget. Um, so our insurance, forty-eight thousand, that seems really high. Is that just because insurance has gone through the roof or what is that? It says provincial, it talks about provincial conditional grant zero, and then it jumps over to like repairs, maintenance, things like that, and then insurance is in there at forty-eight thousand? Is that the entire building for the year?
Uh, through to your worship. I believe that's what it is. Um, because we basically just, uh, took all this information from the operating budget.
Oh, okay. And then put it in there?
And they just put it in there.
Okay, okay. Um, and then I really like how you did the CTC, the cost breakdown, how you show the utility salaries, professional, um, everything like that. That's really nice to see how that's, you know, kind of going. And then on the next page, you did the labor versus the capital, which I really appreciate. That's awesome that you did that. And then I like also how you compared it to our other buildings. Because I know a lot of the times we look at that building as, um, you know, why isn't it making more revenue or why isn't it doing that? When you compare it with our other buildings, they're municipal buildings, right? We have staff, we have operation expenses, we have capital projects, you have all that. So it's nice to see that, um, when you kind of look at it, we're i- in reality, we're actually sitting not bad. I know we want to see more revenue there, but when you compare it to our other facilities, it's comparable and it's almost lower in some, right? So, um, I know that we're looking at ways to increase that revenue and to, um, increase the utilization of that. So hopefully, you know, that will help too. But when you do that comparison, I think that it, yeah, it was a fantastic job and really nice to see. Um, and then when we do talk about ways to increase the revenue and, um, utilization of the building, what I didn't see in here was, um, what we talked about, uh, with Alberta Council and what we talked about in our strap planning is focusing, yes, on the healthcare. Maybe that's kind of our niche, but that bioenergy, that, uh, clean energy. Um, and, and I'm not seeing an ask for the province. And I know one of the things is that building was built on a provincial grant and the original intention of it was for clean energy and, and, you know, the expansion of the bio mile and things like that. So when we did talk about that, we said, you know, this next year, let's work hard to see if we can get the province on board. They have mandate letters, they have a plan, same way we're approaching Alberta Health Services. How does our, our building and our ideas and plan align with the provinces, right? Because if we can get funding for operating, whether it's through a satellite campus for post-secondary, whether it's, um, you know, they're looking for a building to launch a pilot for some sort of clean tech or, or bioenergy, you know, um, uh, program, then that's what we're doing there. So that's what, what I'd like to see included, I think, in that as well as to make sure that we're going after that. So, uh, we do have, um, a visit that's going to be happening in August. So for me, um, that's something that we have to talk about, but that's definitely an ask that I'd like to, to focus on is that building and how we can align with it. So if that's, you know, somewhere we, where we can go to is an expansion of that?
No, no, for sure. I mean, um, I guess for, uh, the bioenergy and the bioeconomy side of things, that's more of, um, the sustainability and economic development side of stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, yeah, I guess we didn't, we didn't really touch on that stuff too much, only because we're just trying to look at just education, just as a whole. Um, but I mean, yeah, advocacy, it can definitely be something very strong that we can lean on. And so for us, we're just trying to figure out what that looks like, right?
Yeah.
And so if everything falls in place, uh, for this education management plan in the way that we think it can, we can at least have an identity, right? And from that, through that identity, then we think it might be easier to approach the province and say, well, this is what currently have, this is what we've done. Is what we possess within the CTC. Is there any way at all that, you know, this aligns with what you're doing and all of that? So.
Yeah, and that would be helpful because, you know, when the province created that regional stewardship and Norquist was here, that was quite a bit of revenue that we were, um, getting from them. And now that that's been taken away from us, I think that our stand to the province was, since Drayton Valley doesn't really align with the regional steward because we're more of a trades, we're oil and gas, you know, we're looking at healthcare as being the niche. Um, you know, we're looking for that support when it comes to post-secundaries for that funding, right? Still, we didn't ask for, you know, Norquist to be our regional steward. We asked for the blessing from the Minister of Advanced Education to work with other post-secundaries that aligned with rural communities. They gave us that blessing, but they didn't give us the dollars or the designation, right? So I think, I think the push was to get the dollars, to get the support for the designation or a satellite or something. So just to kind of keep that on our radar, I think is really important. But yeah, I appreciate everything that you've done, all the efforts. And then just my last question would be, um, when we look at the education revenue for, um, the Healthcare Academy, it's decreased quite a bit. And I know that has a lot to do with the face-to-face and, and online learning. Uh, one of the things that they had mentioned was they were still looking for an instructor in the area. Did we find that instructor so we can get back to the face-to-face learning?
Uh, through to your worship, no. So, um, they are still looking for an instructor that they can have full-time. I think currently they have someone that's working part-time and, uh, but, but you know, it is a conversation that we keep having with them. Uh, we did, um, you know, a few weeks back, we did, uh, on the CTC Facebook page, we did publicize a job posting for them for the trade show that we went to. We did have like, uh, you know, Healthcare Academy job posting QR code as well that people can sort of look at. So yeah, so it is, it does look like it's going to be, um, quite a grueling thing for them to sort of try to find, just having someone within Drayton, right? That is at least a registered nurse to be able to do these classes. And so, uh, yeah, so as of now, just nothing has happened.
Yeah, that's unfortunate. It'd be, you know, we have a lot of, um, you know, nurses in the community and, and people close to retirement and retirement that we were hoping that, you know, would apply for the position. So I think for anyone out there that's listening or online, if you hear of anyone or interest, or maybe there's something that we're not advertising or there's something that we could do. We, I know I had a conversation with Healthcare Academy. Maybe there's something that we're missing. Maybe it's not the full-time. Maybe it's the part-time. Maybe there's an incentive. Maybe there's something to say, you know, would you stay in the community and teach, right? It's, so I guess if there's any suggestions from anybody else, we would greatly appreciate them as well. Um, but yeah, thank you very much for your presentation today and I believe there's a motion. Did you have any questions, Council McGee?
Uh, coming from your questions, um, salaries and wages, your salaries and wages and Maryland's are, are not in that seventy, fifty-one thousand, I take it, right? So that's, so that, that's page twenty-nine, but so I just, um, broke down the numbers and we're at three hundred thousand dollars to run the facility without, uh, two of our, our most important people. Uh, in a sense, uh, the, the, the wages are not there. Uh, and then we're at forty-five thousand for, for revenue. So it's a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar a year without your wages touch. And, um, I think we, we need to, we need to think a little bit outside the box. I think we're, like, I don't know what you expect to happen in the next six months. Can, can you just describe what, what the, if, if all things fall into place, what could happen?
So, uh, just referring to page twenty-nine. Uh, yeah, so the way we did the expense breakdown was to basically look at what are all those elements, right, within our expenses? That money's been going towards, right? And so, yeah, so for the salary and wages, it is twenty percent of my salary, I guess, goes to, uh, that CTC budget, about ten percent of Maryland's and a hundred percent for the student support specialist, right?
Yep.
But then we did also just want to note that, um, you know, so for the student support specialist, she started working for the town, uh, last year, November, right? I started working last year, September, and these are twenty-twenty-three budget actuals, right? So they haven't taken the full year, uh, the full scope, right, off. Me working for the entire year, her working for the entire year. And so that's just something that we just wanted to note there. Uh, so these numbers could be deflated in a way, right? Um, but yeah, no, to answer your question about what the next six months would look like, honestly, so for us, the first step was just to have this plan presented to council, right? And if council is in agreement with the direction that we're heading with something like this, then the idea will be then to just start enacting a lot of these things, right? And just come forward with what implementation would look like. And so through all those three sections, we had project proposals. And so those project proposals are the things that were basically, um, saying to council, hey, uh, for the education area focus, right, here's what we're proposing. For zero fees, this is what we're proposing to do. And if council's on board with that, then we'll just start enacting those things, right? So this might look like changing the policy, revising it, doing the rebranding for the CTC, talking to those community groups and industry, industry partners to see if, you know, they can fit into what we think makes sense in being that educational hub. So we'll start actualizing all those things and then I don't think there'll be any, um, so it might take a bit of time, right? So I don't think by December we would have what we think is complete within the plan itself. But then it's something where we can keep on building to the next year, twenty twenty-five and then twenty twenty-six.
Great, thank you. And as everyone has suggested, nicely done on the, on the work. Thank you.
And you mentioned July twenty-ninth, uh, U of A is coming. Uh, are you, is there an expectation of council to be there, um, stakeholder engagement? I know that we have sponsors for our zero fee. Are they part of that?
So through to your worship. So for this stakeholder engagement, uh, it's mostly with, uh, community groups or post-secondary institutions, right?
Okay.
So we basically looked at the primary and supporting stakeholders that will be mostly impacted by this plan. So, you know, the multicultural association, community learning, we're talking about the library.
Okay.
Yeah, and so for this stakeholder engagement piece, we just wanted to basically have a chat with all those people since they are included in the plan to sort of see if, you know, they like the direction of where things are going. And so, and when it comes to, you know, council and our sponsors, uh, we, we can for sure have a separate stakeholder engagement to that. Um, you know, we have reached out to our sponsors and, uh, we were planning on sending them this plan as well. Just to show like, you know, what they have been funding, right?
Oh, that's good. That's fantastic.
Yeah, exactly. So this is something that they'll be aware of for sure.
Perfect, thank you. Is there a member of council that would like to make a motion to accept this as information? Council Sheriffs?
I'd like to make a motion and that council accepts this as information.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? Council Kamana?
Thank you. So, um, in the future meeting, this will come for, I guess, adoption? This is just as information that you're presenting this right now?
Yeah, through your worship to Council Kamana, exactly. So this is just for information to see if we're heading in the right direction.
Okay.
And then once the engagement is done, we'll integrate that information, make a few revisions and then we'll come with a full plan that council can either endorse or, um, oppose otherwise.
Okay. Would there be another opportunity for us to give you input and feedback before it come back to the council?
Uh, we can certainly set that up. Um, I guess it would just depend, um, I guess if you'd want us to basically, uh, send out a copy before or prior to our, our meeting, we can certainly do that and sort of see what makes sense.
Now, Mr. Sheriffs?
If I may, sure. I think, um, given the amount of discussion, um, and after the, the feedback session that you have and you incorporate that into the plan, then bringing it back to GMP so that we can have a larger discussion and then it can go forward to council for approval.
Uh, yeah, thank you for that. Yeah, um, like I said, you know, um, you've done a fantastic job here. You've worked hard. There's just a few concerns that I have I would like to have discussions on. Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Sheriffs, I've put a motion on the floor. I'll now ask all in favor. That is carried. Uh, and since we have you here, Kundi, maybe we'll jump to, uh, the council appearance request form, which is decision item nine point two, before we call a break.
So, uh, the council appearance request form is designed to encourage citizen, business and organization participation with council. But through a framework that's a little more organized and that allows for us to basically prepare for any sorts of engagements that we have with these sort of organizations. And so the form was created to capture the key elements of what any event would look to have from council. And so what we decided to do was to basically, um, you know, attach a template for what a council appearance request form would look like. And this is something that we were thinking to have on our website. And so it basically, you know, captures just, you know, the basic information that we would need from anyone that's looking to have, whether it be a business, um, grand opening. We do know in some communities, you know, someone has a forty-year anniversary that they want to celebrate, right? They might want to ask council to come. Or, you know, they might, some business might just want a business visitation, right? And so there are all these ways that this form can be used apart from just economic development. And, uh, it's just meant to help us to basically gather as much information as we can from them. And in gathering that information, we'll basically then just work, uh, with council to find, uh, an appropriate response. So, you know, not all requests, right? You know, maybe, no, not all requests might be approved, right? But it's one of those things where for us, if we get as much information, then we can basically plan accordingly for anything that may come about. And with this, uh, council, uh, request form, uh, the only budget implication that we did see is that there will be a three hundred, three hundred dollar cost for those website upgrades. And apart from that, um, you know, if the, we are in agreement with this, uh, there would then be a need for administrative, for an, and for an administrative process to be established to have plan and coordinate some of these events. And so this, you know, would work basically with council, um, with ourselves and maybe, you know, with someone like Nancy to sort of figure that out. And, uh, so in bringing this forward, we basically just wanted to have council, um, you know, just, uh, let us know if this is something that you be, that you think makes sense in putting up on our website. And, uh, with the idea with something like this, right, is that, because I know this happens quite a bit where people might just reach out to you on Facebook or on LinkedIn and, uh, they want an audience, but then there just hasn't been, and, and you know, you try to talk to them personally, but then with something like this, we just thought it would just help streamline all of that, right? We just send them a link and they can just go ahead and, uh, provide that information to us. And so with that said, we'll just bring this forward as, as information and just, uh, want to have council's input on it. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any comments or questions? Any comments or questions? I guess my only comment would be is that we have a thirty to forty-five day in advance of the event. I guess my only concern would be that if someone phones and says they're having a grand opening or a hundred birthday next week, I hope that we're not creating obstacles or red tape, you know, to get council there. Or I, I hope that we're being flexible definitely in this.
Through to your worship, yeah, certainly. That thirty to forty-five day certainly be changed, but it was just something where we're just trying to set a good practice, right? Because some events, right, the, like, I know the grand opening we went to, they might have a media team coming, or they might have all these things, right? Or they might have special guest appearances. And so for good practice, we just put thirty to forty-five days. But of course, we will for sure get those people that want something done tomorrow or next week, right?
We can make it happen. Okay, great. Councilor Evans, did you want to make a motion? You were kind of leaning in towards your mic, so.
No, I was just gonna.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Mr. Ferris.
I'll defer to Deputy Mayor Evans if he has any questions. But I was just, sorry, I was just gonna, I was away last week, but I would, I would modify that motion.
Okay.
To read that council direct administration to implement the council appearance request form as defined in A I R twenty-four dash one seventy-four.
With flexibility?
Yeah, yeah, of course, yeah.
Okay, Councilor Kamana?
Sorry, question then. So with Mayor Dot's comments, I was wondering if you can revert the, the first piece saying, please consider submit your request at least thirty to forty-five days. So that kind of give the flexibility that we are looking for. With Mayor Dot's comments there, I was wondering if we can revert the, the first sentence there, saying, please consider submit your request at least thirty to forty-five days in advance, instead of saying, please submit your application?
Please consider, yeah.
Absolutely, as, as Cooney indicated, it's more of a guideline than anything, but we can soften that, that language, yeah.
Okay, Councilor Evans, did you want to make a motion? That's the job of the deputy, so I get to throw you on the spot now and then.
I'm gonna quit this deputy job pretty quick here. Do you want the, the suggested changes in the, in the motion?
Honestly, I, you know, I appreciate the, the catch there, Councilor Kamana, but I, I don't think we need to put those changes in. As long as we get the, the direction to implement the form, we'll soften that language. And of course, if somebody gets a hold of us a week in advance, we'll still ask them to fill out the form. Yeah.
Yeah, and, and I agree. I think we're gonna get a certain number of people who don't, don't fill out the form and who are gonna want your, especially the mayor.
And deputies.
Your, your attendance. Okay, I'll, I'll take a crack at the, at the resolution. I'll move that council direct administration to implement the council appearance request form as submitted in report A I R twenty-four dash one seventy-four. It works?
With flexibility?
Well, with any required changes.
It's very similar to our delegation request form. Rarely do we get them on time, but it's, it's good to set that up there. And hopefully, you know, there'll be some that will, will adhere to that and, and others we know will, will be last-minute requests. We understand that.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? Then I'll ask all in favor. That is carried. And we'll call a ten-minute break and we'll reconvene and jump back into nine point three decision item. Twenty-two A M. We're back on Berkeley. And we'll jump back into our decision items. Next up on the agenda is nine point three, a development permit, D V twenty-three zero two zero, eleven-unit apartment building. Mr. Woodcliff, good morning.
Thank you, good morning, Mayor and Council. The landowners proposed a sec, building a second apartment building on this property. The existing one you can see is on the top of the, that red square there is a, is a, this twelve-unit building. It's been there for many years. And they're proposing building a second unit just below that. That's sort of the site layout. And that, that's the new building there on the bottom. For this one. It's located at forty-seven sixty-three forty-sixth Street. The property is districted high-density residential, and the purpose of the district is to provide for medium-high-density development by allowing comprehensive multiple-unit dwelling developments and apartments. So this is a, a permitted use at this location. And policy implications, two point seven of the municipal development plan directs that affordable housing is one of the town's priorities. As you know, several studies have identified a shortage of entry-level housing in Drayton Valley, and this development will provide some badly needed entry-level housing in town. And that's probably why they're building it, because it's, there's, there's a market there for that, that type of housing for them. Not in your reports, but we discovered a residential renewal bylaw. And this bylaw encourages smart growth, higher densities, more energy-efficient new buildings. Higher density reduces the per-person cost of providing roads, sewers, and water infrastructure. So it's a, this, this type of development would be, is an intensification of the land use at this location. And that's good for the municipality. Now, the proposed development meets all the requirements of the land use bylaw except for, for these four issues. That's one of the reasons why we wanted to bring it to you, because we thought, you know, sometimes this type of building, it can be controversial. You know, apartment buildings, that sort of thing. And they were asking for four, four variances. The first is site coverage. The maximum site coverage allowed is sixty-five percent. And they're asking for seventy point five percent, for sort of five point five percent variance. We didn't think that five point five percent was a large variance. And considering that there's a to the east is a, is a vacant lot, and we don't know when that's going to be developed. There's a well, I believe, in the center of that lot. Some, one of the landlords did comment that this lot may be sold soon, but I don't, I didn't hear that, but that's what they commented in their letter. But for now, it's, it's an open field, and then we've got a major park just below to the south. So we didn't think that it was really affecting the open space in this area because of those larger open space and park areas. The number of units per air, for area, the maximum number of units per hectare allowed in the land use bylaw is seventy-four units, or total of sixteen, but the applicants wish propose twenty-three units for the whole lot. So they're asking for a variance of seven units. Although the density is higher than allowed in the land use bylaw, they, their parking, they're providing enough parking, so there's one parking space per, for every person in the apartment building. And that meets our land use bylaw requirements. So we don't think that the extra seven units are gonna have a huge impact on, on the area. Rear setback, see it's, the, the green building, it's very close to the back of the property line, it's only one point two meters. They needed to do this in order to get all the parking spaces in and the laneways to drive vehicles in. So it's a little, it's pretty tight on this site. They couldn't quite get everything in there, so they, that's why they're proposing moving it back to the back of the property line. And again, it's, there's a lot of open space around this area, and we didn't think a one point two meter setback would make a big difference. And, you know, that lot may not be developed for years, we, you know, but of course, it could be at some point, but I'm sure we can, we can work around that. Recreational space, bylaw requires five percent of the land to be dedicated for recreational space for development succeeding ten units. And this is eleven units, but a total of twenty-three. The applicants propose only one point six percent of recreational space. But again, you know, you've got a major park to the south, really within walking distance, and that large open field. So there's plenty of recreational space available within walking distance. And there, there are four, four, four schools also in this area, so that's, and they offer, also offer recreational facilities for people. So we don't think that the lack of recreational space on this, on the lot will have a huge impact. We think there's plenty of space for people to, for recreational activities. Landscaping. The land use bylaw requires a one point eight-meter landscape buffer along public roadways. Now, they, they haven't provided any landscaping along the frontage of that building, along the roadway, but they have added a bunch of landscaping at the top that goes around, it's actually more than one point eight. It's actually longer than the, than the, but right, right now, there's nothing there. And they're, they're actually proposing a quite a large area of landscaping. So it's gonna improve the look of this lot, even though there isn't landscaping right in front of the actual building. They need that space so they can get the cars in there for parking, so. Once, that's an issue. If, if you want parking, you need to give up something else. So in order to fit this on the property, they needed to do that. Although, and again, they are providing some landscaping around to the north, north, and then to the, to the, to the east. We received a couple of letters, or a couple of letters of concern from the people in the building, the Rotary Building, there to the south. They said, they commented that there are not enough parking stalls in town and that people will park on the street, making snowplow, plowing difficult. Again, you know, that's potentially an issue in a lot of places in town, but they are, we, they are, do have enough parking spaces to meet the requirements of the land use bylaw. So we don't think that's an issue. Garbage bins, litter issues, if, if there is, if, if there, if the bins are overflowing, then we can use enforcement to enforce the litter issues with our enforcement people. But, you know, the town's not responsible for, for people dumping from the apartment, dumping garbage in the Rotary Building's garbage box. That's not pretty our responsibility, they don't think, to police that. And that was their concern. I guess that's, that's happening when they're, when the bin at the apartment is, the existing apartment's full, they're going down and dumping it into the Rotary bin. You know, it, it's kind of odd the way that's set up, but that, there's a, it looks like the parking lot's, it's right behind the Rotary building, and it's, it, the gravel actually goes right up to the building. So maybe people parked there from the Rotary building, or maybe people thought that that bin, from the apartment, thought that that bin was part of their property, I'm not sure. But anyway, we don't think that's a big issue. The green space, again, to the, the east there, they mentioned that it's coming up for sale. I, I don't know if anybody's heard anything about that. I haven't heard anything about that coming for sale, but, you know, it could be. But again, it's gonna be a hundred-meter setback from that oil facility. I don't know if it's been reclaimed or whether it's in process of being reclaimed, but it could be a while before that happens. And again, they're just, the property is very close to that park and also schools. They mentioned that there's no fence between the Rotary building and their, and this property to the west or to the north. And we can add a condition saying that they have to put a fence there. That's something we can put on the development permit to take care of that issue. And of course, that'll prevent people from going in there and, and dumping stuff in their garbage bin unless they want to go around, I guess, but. So administration recommends that council approve development permit, D V two-four dash two zero. And I added a little bit that's not on the, in the, in the package, and instruct administration to issue a permit with appropriate conditions. I apologize for not providing all the conditions in the actual permit. I think that's what we have done in the past, but I, I didn't, I, I, I missed that step. So we can issue the permit, you can approve the, the development, then we'll issue the permit with conditions, appropriate conditions. That works.
Okay, thank you for your report. Any questions? Councilor Clark?
The only thing that I necessarily concern is just the setback. I mean, maybe this is a question for Tom. I don't know if that's a, is it a potential fire issue? So if somebody builds a building to the east at some point, you know, that six-meter to one point two-meter setback, if we kind of provide that variance, is that a, is that a concern at all from a fire perspective? No? Otherwise, yeah, I mean, we keep talking about affordability, we keep talking about housing, we keep talking about all that stuff. We need to enable it, I think. So I think the, the, the stuff that we're talking about here is pretty reasonable. The issues to the south, I think, are easily dealt with. Throw a lock on your dumpster, I mean, that's a pretty easy fix. But otherwise, I think, I think it's, this is a plus for Drayton Valley, so.
Councilor Evans?
Doug, could you show me where the rest of the parking spots are? So with twenty-three units, they'd have to have twenty-three parking spots? Is that, is that correct? I don't see twenty-three there. But I, I knew we talked about by the roadway or? Oh, yeah, okay. So that's.
So the application today is for eleven units?
Oh, okay. Well, then there's, there's enough there.
They, they wanted to make sure that this was appropriate in this area before they built the, the final engineering drawings.
Okay.
So we'll get those, we'll sort out any issues like that.
So twenty-three is the total number of units between the two?
Two buildings, yeah, eleven, twelve at the top and eleven at the bottom, yeah.
All righty. Sorry, that's where I misunderstood. Yeah, lots of variances. For the most part, they're pretty minor, but yeah, I, I think it's definitely worthwhile. It's something, something the town desperately needs.
Councilor Kamana?
Thank you. Yeah, I heartily agree with Councilor Collins' comments and Councilor Evans' comments. Just wondering, on the picture that we had, if we can go there, it looked like, yeah, so there, it looked like the, the separation between Rotary House and, and this building. Is it kind of going in between the, the parking lot of Rotary House? Or is there any impact to the Rotary House parking at all with this? There is, right? Yeah.
Doug, can you just put your mic on, please?
Yeah, the, well, the, the lot line cuts kind of halfway through that parking lot. So I, I think the Rotary is probably using that as a parking lot. And then the apartment building, they were using the, the north part of it, but I'm not sure. It looks like they kind of shared it.
It is, yeah. When I, when I checked the Google Maps, you know, that, that looks like that's what's happening. So maybe that's a, again, a concern that we need to work on. But I heartily agree with the comments that we need to move on with, with the project. But it's working with the, the parties to make sure that, you know, everybody has what they need around there. Thank you.
There's no other questions? Councilor McGee?
So if I read it correctly, we're only gonna build one apartment building with twenty-three suites. I didn't read it correctly, then.
Eleven suites in the second. The, the north one has twelve, and the, so the new building will have eleven.
North one has twelve, new building, parking lot in between, fence for Rotary House. The green space is there. The, the only thing I, it, it looks a little institutionalized. Is that the best drawing you could get for, for department buildings? Can you put a, like, a square in there?
Looks kind of like a prison in the picture, but.
Sure, which door to use, but.
Yeah, they're gonna provide better drawings here if they get the approval. They wanted to get the approval first. We'll have a look at the drawings and make sure that they're.
Deal with the details and then, yeah. Yeah, because it would sure be nice to, I don't know, throw out something.
An artist's sketch or something.
Yeah. Okay. That's it, thanks.
So as part of the conditions, do we have architectural constraints and expectations for developing in this area? And those will be attached to as part of the condition, like when we talk about?
Yes, I'll, we do have some. We don't have a lot in town, but we do have some. It's usually that happens when, when the, for the new subdivision, you'll have architectural controls. But we do have some that we, I'm sure we can apply something onto this, make sure that it's, looks presentable, it looks nice for the community.
Aesthetically, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, if there's no other questions, is there a member of council that would like to make a motion on this? Okay. If there's no other questions, is there a member of council that would like to make a motion on this? Council Evans, thank you.
I'll make the motion that council approved development permit DV twenty four dash zero two zero for AIR dash twenty four dash one sixty nine with appropriate conditions. Does that cover? What you need? And instruct administration to issue the permit with the appropriate conditions. That works? You got that, Nancy?
Okay, thank you for that. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? I would just be in agreeance that it's nice to see some development happening in the community and there's definitely a need for housing. So this is fantastic to see if it all goes through. And with that being said, there's motion on the floor. I'll now call all in favor. That is carried. Thank you very much. Next up is 9.4, which is our community grants. Ms. Lola Strand, this is our third quarter allocation.
Okay, so this is our third quarter allocation for community events grants. We've received zero applications for the Roger Coles Memorial Sport Grant. However, we did receive five applications for community events. We received one application from the Pembina Nordic Ski Club for their annual turkey trot race that's happening October 12th. Their request is $1,500. That's the event where they invite the entire community to come out, do a five kilometer walk or run. They have lots of fun prizes. They encourage folks to dress up like turkeys. So it's, it's a really fun family event. We received an application from the Pembina Regional Aerodrome Association for their airport event that's happening May 31st, 2025. Their request was $1,000. We received an application from the Drayton Valley ALS Committee. They're doing a dueling pianos fundraising event on September 28th, 2024 over at the Mackenzie Center. They requested any amount that the town of Drayton Valley wishes to donate. We received one from the Black Gold Brute Obstacle Course Race for the brute race, which did happen June 8th of 2024. Their application was incomplete, so there wasn't a request. And the final one was from the Small Town Big Life Foundation for their annual street party happening August 16th of 2024. The request was $6,600 along with some in-kind services. So the committee did meet and have a look at these requests. And the recommendations are as follows. They recommended for the Pembina Nordic Ski Club Turkey Trot Race. The recommendation is that they do meet the criteria and based on the current best practices to maximize the funding, getting each organization $1,000 per event, we recommend the $1,000. The Pembina Regional Aerodrome Association event isn't being hosted until May 31st of 2025. So the recommendation is to hold this application over so that we're looking at 2025 funds. The ALS Committee Dueling Pianos Fundraising Event, again, they, they asked for whatever that we wish to contribute. The recommendation by the committee was to pay the MCC rental bill, which is $912.98. On the Black Gold Brute Obstacle Course application, again, it was incomplete. And we did, we do recommend that we decline that application as it already did receive funding this year in quarter one. They received $2,500 in quarter one. And for the Small Town Big Life Foundation Street Party, again, based, if they do meet the criteria and based on current best practices and to maximize the funding throughout the year, the committee felt that each organization again should receive $1,000 per those types of events. And also, the committee recommends that we provide those in-kind services. They're looking for like the street cleaning and the garbage cleanup and things like that. Because it's not on the weekend, we felt that we could just do those services at no charge. So that would bring us to a total of $2,912.38. We do have $9,650 remaining. So if the recommendations are approved, we would have $6,737.2 remaining for that fourth quarter, which sounds like a lot. However, the, the last year, we did receive eight applications still in that quarter four and, and the year previous was about the same. So the recommendation for council would be the council approved the 2024 third quarter town of Drayton Valley's community grant applications for a total of $2,912.98 as reported in report AIR twenty four dash one seventy.
Thank you very much for your report. Questions for administration? There's none. Is there a member of council that would like to make a motion? Councilor Kamana?
Thank you. I would like to make a motion that council approves the 2024 third quarter town of Drayton Valley community grant applications for a total of 2,912.98 as presented in report AIR twenty four one seventy. Thank you.
Thank you for the motion. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? There's none, then I'll call all in favor. All a poll? Okay, that is carried. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to 9.5, Q2 financial report. Ms. Elvira Thompson, good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Can't believe that half the year is already gone. Okay, so if we start at the top under general revenue, you will note that the bottom net revenue line is higher than the budget and that will be because the council chose to utilize the assessment growth this year, which increased our tax revenue. So off to a good start there. Franchise fees and other revenue. Franchise fees is pretty much right on track. We could, sometimes we're behind one month in billing, so there might be a slight timing issue there. And then other revenue for interest revenue, we are trending slightly above, which is great. Yeah, that's other revenue. Going on to general admin, very, very close to where we would expect us to be. There are a couple of projects that haven't started yet, some operating stuff that's in here that we haven't done yet, which causes us to be a little bit below budget. But nothing, nothing to note in, in terms of actual savings, just the timing of when expenses incur. And our protective services, so the biggest thing there that makes it look off is the timing of the police grant. We usually get that towards the end of the year. So it looks like the police grant is under budget as of right now, but we usually get that, I believe, in October. So that's just a timing thing. And then everything else is sort of where we would like to see it fired. The revenue is a little higher along with the expenses. It just means if we, if the expenses are trending above, so is the revenue because we do cost share with the county on our fire services. But no concerns there in terms of the expenses, just the timing of projects. Police and the other police disaster and bylaw, nothing unexpected there. And moving on to transportation. We have, we see that in, in this department especially, we see a lot, a high amount of expenses or a high percent of our expenses incurred late summer, early fall. And so a lot of road repairs or are perhaps not road repairs, a lot of the road repairs have been done, like hot folding and that kind of thing, but sidewalks and such, they are not yet completed. So once those pick up here right away, we, we would expect to see that road, streets, sidewalks somewhat pick up, especially because snow and ice is over right now this year due to a lot of snow in the later part of this winter, meaning earlier part of this fiscal year. But nothing really to be concerned about. If we do go over on our snow and ice this year, then we do have that reserve amount from savings that we had last year. So it shouldn't cause a tax impact that council will have to consider next year, which is really great. Utilities, the revenue is slightly up. Some of that is just the timing of when things happen. But then the expenses are kind of down from the budget. And again, I know I sound like a broken record, but there is some road repairs at the landfill that were budgeted for that haven't been, yet been done. And some bigger expenses, repairs at the utilities, at the water treatment plant that haven't been done. And then there was one project that Shelley found some significant savings in as well. So there are some true savings there for sure, but some of that is just timing. Community services. So the biggest thing to note, everything else is very, very on par. ECDC, there were some changes to the grant program, which saw us have a little bit more revenue, which is really great. The expenses are slightly down, but the revenues are up for ECDC, which is what, what caused the net revenue or the net expense to be lower, meaning that we're trending better than budgeted for community services. Everything else is very, very close to what we would expect in this, in community services. Moving on to planning and development. The education, you see that the budget is 50 and there's nothing in the actual that those were reserve transfers that still need to be done. So there, it's not a grant or anything like that. It is a rich reserve transfer in, into revenue this year. That will still be happening. So just hasn't been adjusted yet. And then for expenses, planning is low and we're still looking for GM of planning. So that's the biggest reason for that being low. And then also some operating projects that will tie into here that we're still working on. Economic development, right where we'd like to see it. The CTC falls under that category in this report. Education is low right now. Yeah, we just, the spending all that on the students, I know like Kundi is working really hard on bringing students in, but yeah, we just, we haven't quite spent as much as we'd expect by this time of year. But we do see that in like we might, I don't know, I haven't talked to Kundi about this specifically, but sometimes in the fall, we'll have like a big intake and then we'll have a big expenditure out during that time, which could be the case here. And parks and recreation. Man, like I don't think you could expect to see more close budget to actuals here at the bottom, 1.42, 1.41, which is really great to see because especially considering that the pool is fairly new still and that the, we're still kind of figuring out. We're still trying to figure out what the budget is kind of exactly going to look like. But we see that the pool revenue is up by a little bit and so are the expenses, but that is. Yeah, so we're netting out very, very much what we budgeted. And then the Omni Plex, the revenue is slightly below, trending below. However, we do have a big increase in the fall for revenue when hockey and all the ice sports start back up. And then MCC, we, we see often late summer, early fall, and then winter when we do Christmas parties, that's when our revenues pick up for the MCC. And so you see the correlated, the revenues is down, but so are the expenses for both the Omni Plex and the MCC. So at the bottom, yeah, you'll see that the, the budget is just slightly better than we, or the actuals are just slightly better than we expected, which is, which is really great. This is one of our big things that we, we offer the community. So it's nice to see us being kind of where we expected. And then other, you have the operating contingency. Not everything that is spent from the operating contingency is always coded there. For example, if it is a wage-related item, for financial statement purposes, those amounts are coded in wages. We can't classify a wage necessarily, or there are some other examples where we can't necessarily classify it as a contingency. But the budget is being used up as we make motions and counsel to use up contingencies. So most of this contingency to date has been used up. So when you get to the summary page, you see that the actual surplus for year to date is 10.6 million. And the budgeted surplus is 9.3 million, meaning that we're ahead by 1.3 million. And then at the bottom, you can see where those are coming from. So again, we talked a lot in utilities. We have some savings there that are, some of which are true savings, some of which are timing of, of projects. And general revenue, you see that 412,000. That's partially interest revenue, partially increase in taxes from the budget. So the budget is looking really good as of June 30th, 2024. Any questions? I, I will continue, but if there's questions on that, then we'll do that first. Thank you very much for that. Any questions?
Councilor Kamana?
Thank you. Alvaro, just wondering, when you say year-to-date surplus, some, because of the project, some actuals, is it kind of half-half or would you say?
More of the savings are due to timing that are not true savings, I would say.
Okay.
The, the, the true savings are a small portion of that. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Clark?
That was going to be my question. Were we looking at like 10% of that?
Yeah, I would, yeah, probably about 10%. Well, maybe more. I would say of the 1.3 million, true savings, I guess, in terms of more revenue and less expenses. So if you take the tax into it, we're probably, we're probably 30%. That's true savings. Yeah.
Okay, if you want to.
Hop on the next report there, financial information. So we go over these receivable balance, just to keep council kind of in the loop as how our collections are going. General receivables are down last June from this June. There's just having more time to call people, some bigger receivables that we collected. And so that is really good. Utilities, you see it up. There are a couple of reasons why the utility receivables are up. It's a timing of some of the cycles combined with last June having a low usage. Or, or what we would have billed last June and May would have been low usage. So what was outstanding as of June might have been lower. And then we did have one larger customer that we were just working with to collect from, all of which caused the June 2024 utility receivable balance to be higher than the June 2023. And then tax receivables, it was interesting. It took me a couple of minutes to realize what was going on. I was pulling reports and I thought last June, like nine million in receivables. But we pushed the tax deadline to July last year. So we had a big receivable balance as of June. So that's why that nine million is there. So I have a note at the bottom comparing this June to last July, which is a more comparable dollar value. And so, yeah, it's, it's just slightly higher than last year, which with the combined number of people that are typically late, you see that, that built, that balance tends to build, especially when tax rates increase. So nothing, nothing of note there. I was very impressed with our collections this year, like every other year, but sometimes when, with the cost of everything these days and the taxes as well, you'd expect the receivables to grow and we are not really seeing that trend. It's, the team is working really hard to make sure, to work with people that need to have some plans in place and just to remind people, call them, all the different ways that we can help people pay their taxes on time. Other liabilities, we have deferred revenue. That's mostly money we've been saving up from our CCBF, which is our Canada Community Building Fund, I believe it stands for, previously gas tax, as well as our MSI. We were saving those, a lot of those dollars for 50th Avenue. And so we'll see a lot of that used up this year. We'd used some of it up last year, but yeah, we'll see a lot of that used up this year. And our debenture balance, we have not, although we passed two new debenture bylaws, we've not yet borrowed on those. So you see that our debenture balance is decreasing as we're making payments. Our bank balance went from, you know, June of last year was 17 million, June of this year, 24 million. A lot of that is the timing of when we collected that nine million last year. Current big grants outstanding that we were, we're expecting to receive are the LGFF Capital and LGFF Operating. And we just got a letter confirming that we're also receiving the CCBF. So the story there was that. receiving the CCBF. So the story there was that CCBF, similar to MSI or LGFF, there's long-term agreements in place. So you can expect to receive funds regularly for a set amount of time. You don't know how much you're going to receive each year because it's based on you know, the statistics within municipalities, but also on government surpluses. So you don't know exactly how much you're going to receive, but you have an estimate. But you do know one thing, and that is that the agreement lasts for 10 years. You know, you'll receive something within those 10 years. And the CCBF agreement had ended in 2024 or 2023. And so they were, it took them a long time to come to an agreement, but we did receive a letter this week or last week that it is, the agreement is signed for another 10 years. So we can expect to receive CCBF funds until 2034. So that's really good news. So we'll be receiving that. It was, I want to say it's 474,000 in 2024. A little up a little bit from last year. And then we get to the reserve section. So we, we talked about, a lot about this when Phil presented the financial statements. And I'm going to try to explain it again in a way that makes sense, but the reserve balance, it looks like you went from 8.7 to 13 million. And the reason for that is that the internally restricted reserves essentially are, are unrestricted surplus are, are in they, we had previously recorded a payable essentially. So every year we say, okay, so we're this much closer to having, having to close this landfill. So we will put money aside as a payable that we know we will have to pay someday. And so the way that the financial statements had to be stated changed from that. And now what they did is they said, we have to record the full amount of what it might cost someday as an asset and then amortize against it. And so what they did was they wiped out our liability, put it back in our surplus and then recorded the entire thing as an cost as an asset and then are recording the amount against that every year. So what it means is that sure, this increased a little bit here, but that is going right back to the landfill over the next few years as we get closer to having to close it. So it's not really money that's there to be spent, but it is technically part of our reserves. So that's, that's why. So here I have a note saying taking that out, then our reserves would be 9.9 million, meaning they increased by 1.2 million last year. So that is all the money that council budgeted to put to reserves in the 2023 budget. We had committed to numerous reserve transfers. And we saw also due to interest revenue and some other things, we saw the ending of 2023 being better than expected. And so we did actually see a small increase to our reserves in 2023. And that's it for that. If there's any questions? Any questions? Nope. And the last page is just the capital. I always show, you know, what, how we've been spending or it kind of shows kind of what we've been working on. I'm not going to go through in too much details because the project sheets that you've been seeing should highlight the, the status of the projects and where we're at. But just to date, or as of June, we'd spent 645,000 on capital projects. Not unsurprising, even though our budget is 11 million. We see a lot of uptake right around this time of year. So we're very quickly now starting to see some of these costs come in. As of the date, I pulled this report, which was Wednesday or Thursday last week, we'd spent 748,000. I would guess by the end of June, or sorry, July, we'd be, we'd be up over a million at that point. So and most of that, a lot of that would be for the 50th Ave East Improvements because they're working hard on that project right now. But yeah, if any, any money related questions on the capital projects, I can answer them or try to answer them. And if not, that's the Q2 financial report. Any questions on the capital projects? There's not going to get a member of council to make a motion, please, to accept this as information. Council Evans, thank you.
I'll make the motion that council accept the quarter two financial report for AIR-24-181 as information.
Thank you for that. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? And I'll call all in favor. And that is carried. Thank you very much for your report. We will pause now and we will move to our tribute to Councilor Bill Ballas. Thank you all for coming today. It was nice that you got to see a little bit of what your dad and your grandpa did. Unfortunately, it was the boring part of all the numbers and the budget. So I don't, I don't know how exciting you might have found that, but it's nice to see you all and we hope that you're hanging in there and you're doing okay. I know that we have a large void here between town council and administration with, with your dad being gone, with Councilor Bill Ballas being gone. And I did write a little something because I didn't want to speak because I know that I'd probably cry a lot. So I'm going to try not to cry as I read through this. Today, we pay tribute to a dedicated public servant and a passionate individual who has left an indelible mark on our community. I want to start by saying thank you, Councilor Bill Ballas, for your dedication, your passion and your love for our community. He was a true champion of our community and his passing leaves a void in all of us. For seven years, you served on council, whether it was addressing the concerns of the residents, working with local businesses, championing initiatives that supported economic development, Bill was always there. Bill's dedication to public service was unwavering and his passion for economic development was contagious. He worked hard to attract new businesses and investments in our area. He was a true champion of the hemp industry. He recognized his potential to create jobs and to stimulate our local economy. For this, we are grateful for his advocacy and hard work to create growth opportunities and expand the economics of Drayton Valley. But Bill's impact extended far beyond the realms of economics. His love for his family was evident in everything that he did. If he wasn't busy with council, he was entertaining his many grandchildren or supporting our local hockey community. Bill was more than a colleague to us. He was a friend, a mentor, a passionate advocate for the betterment of our community. His dedication was unwavering. Bill's greatest legacy is not just in the work that he did, but it's in the people that he touched along the way. His generous spirit, his bad jokes that made us all laugh. His family, his friends that he spoke so highly of. He had a way of inspiring us to be proud of our work and our efforts to make a difference in our community. As we pay tribute to Councilor Bill Ballas today, we are reminded that even in the face of bureaucratic red tape and administrative nonsense, Bill never lost his passion and his sense of humor. He always knew how to punctuate a meeting with a well-timed, this is bullshit. And we are all better for it. Thank you again, Bill, for your wisdom, your laughter, your advocacy, and for the years that you have served our community. Thank you to his family for sharing him with us. To my fellow counselors, let us take a moment and remember Bill today and to honor his memory by continuing his work and striving to make a positive difference in the community that we also love. We made a little video of the last seven years Bill on council and we just wanted to share it with everyone. So if we're ready to play it, we'll watch. Beautiful. I'm not sure if anyone has any other comments that they'd want to say. Miller?
Thank you. I'd, thank you, Mayor Dots for, for that great video. I had the opportunity to sit beside him for the last seven years. And as a community, as a council, we went up, you know, ups and downs, but he always had a level head and helped us through all those challenges. He's a, he's a true mentor. He's very passionate about our community and he has, he has done wonders to our community. I was, I was reading a book yesterday. It's called Ikigai, which is a Japanese word for the art of staying young while growing old. And when I read the book, I totally remembered how Bill is. He has mastered the, the art of getting old while staying young. And it's, it's going to be a great loss to the community, to the council and to me personally. May he rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I think we'll just call a, a few minute break here and we'll gather ourselves and chat with the family a little bit and then we'll reconvene after. So for those of you that are online, if anyone's still online, just hold on, we'll be back in a few minutes. Okay, we will reconvene our meeting at 11:32 and we're on our last decision item. Oh, sorry, that was me. I got Christie's email. So our last decision item, 9.6, Ms. Thompson, we'll be talking about the 2025 budget. Thank you again. Try to.
Just, yeah, we talked about this to me.
I thought after, I thought I was going first and then you were going, you were going first? Okay.
So.
Mr. Ferris.
Just before Alvera jumps in her report. So this was, this was promised back in January, February, that we would bring a report forward that kind of identifies the needs of administration in the organization. I will say a couple of things. Number one, we did not have time to prioritize or to phase this out. So the, so what you're going to see is obviously going to be spread out over a number of years. So don't think that we're asking for all of this in, in next year, which you know, we understand is, is going to be another difficult budget year. So we will come back, we come back at budget time in the fall. These will be prioritized. There'll be things that are removed that you won't see that will be in future years. So this was a big grab. The one thing that I do want to say as we start to move into this is is, and you heard me say this last year, is that, you know, best practice that I've seen in, in the municipal world for your budget is that your property tax base should cover your operating costs, right? If we can get there, then all your other funding like franchise fees and utility fees can feed into capital projects and special projects and, and to keep your reserves up to date where they should be. Right now, the organization subsidizes our operating expense by, by taking approximately $3 million from a combination of our franchise fees and our utilities. So in time, we should start to wean, wean off of that if we can. And that, that will take some time. That's not going to happen in two or three years. That's going to happen in probably 10 years. When we really look at it, we don't have a definite plan on how to do that. So I wanted to provide that context to council. I don't want you to panic when you see all the asks. And again, they're not prioritized and they're not phased. So with that, I'll pass it over to Alvera.
Thank you for that. Thanks. Okay. So you'll see the first page there. It's a familiar document. And so I have it formatted like I did through last budget season. So at the top, you see the operating surplus. Just over $3 million. So I just want to make a couple of comments that it's, right now I started with 0% tax. The, when I do long-term planning, we always are looking at between two and three. So I'm always forecasting. If I'm looking at long-term planning, I'm always forecasting some sort of increase because I'm always forecasting the expenses to increase. Therefore, the revenues have to keep up. So within this, we have a 0% tax increase and, but we do have some expense increases in there. So if we were to balance those out, that surplus would be a little bit higher. If we were keeping up with expenses. So that's something that we can discuss and get to during budget deliberations, but that's just a comment there. And then of course we have to, the interest for principal or for debt is an operating in, it gets looped into the operating surplus, but the debt payments are they're not an expense, but they are a cash flow requirement. We do have to raise taxes to make those payments, which is why we take that there. Meaning that the, the remaining surplus is 1.8 million. And just a comment here. In 2018, this number was 3.5 million. Then in 2019, that's when the tax decreased, the tax income, tax revenues, which is when we saw that plummet fairly substantially and has been in closer to anywhere from 200,000 one year, which is next to nothing, to the one to two million is the highest that we've seen it. So that's kind of what we're trying to catch up from, I guess, you could say. Right, right off the bat, we have a lot of operating requests and a lot of capital requests. And so like Wally mentioned, the capital, we did do prioritizing. They are prioritized from one to four. So you will see on there that they do have priorities. But the operating was just, we put everything on there that admin felt like we needed to keep and maintain these levels of service and, and to meet capacity. So we'll get to those and then I'll just quickly highlight. So the reserve requirements. We have landfill reserves, always contributing to those wildfire reserve payback. So we essentially said we would just take it all out of reserves. And then in three years, we just put that back into the reserves. So that's what that is. Capital reserves, just items that council was asking a few years. A few years ago, we started talking about putting half a percent every year and increasing what we contribute. Perpetual care, that's for cemeteries. So the story behind cemeteries is that, once that cemetery closes, we have to maintain it indefinitely for the rest of our life. And so the revenue will stop coming in, but we will still have costs. So the idea is we charge for, well, perpetual fees. I don't remember exactly what we call them. We charge a little bit on every, every time we sell a plot, we've charged a little bit, and that is supposed to go into a reserve so that in the future, when that closes, we have money to pull on to maintain it.
And that's a cemetery right here?
This is coming from the other one because we never had this set up for this one. So it's just being spent from our operating right now, yeah. So we're trying to set it up so that in the future, when that one closes, the one that's being in use right now, that there'll be money to pull from to maintain it. Recreation reserves, so this was set up two years ago, we started, I believe, for the replacement of the ice plant. We know that's gonna come up in a matter of years. And then protective services, I was gonna separate them out between protective and enforcement, but it's some for the AFRAX radios that we committed to save up for over the next few years, and the other is for Travis fees that are going into the enforcement reserve. And so that's what these reserves are. And so briefly, what Wally's talking about, you have a water and sewer reserve here. And based on what we're charging for utilities, the capital projects, there should be enough money to maintain and replace the capital infrastructure for water and sewer as they come up. But because we haven't been committing to those reserves, now, when we're doing projects, we have to find money somewhere, whether it's grants borrowing or whatever. So if this money was going into, all into water and sewer, then a lot of the money that we do get for grants and other money could be spent on projects that council wishes or like the other needs, I guess. So that's where we need to start contributing here to the water and sewer reserves. So yeah, let's jump to the projects. I'll just highlight the projects really quickly. Just note, there's a couple of things to note. Not all of these numbers are firm, and not all of these numbers will necessarily come to this budget. We will go through a process with our administration to see what makes the most sense, what we have the capacity for. But this is everything that people said, like, we'd like to get done, would help the community, it would help our department, it would keep our levels of service steady. So that's just a note. So resulting from the MDP update, we see the need for a transportation master plan. We have flowers, the same budget, I guess, the same proposal from last year that we, that didn't get approved. We put it, it's back on here, same as the e-permits, that e-permit software or module that we are gonna buy through our current asset management providers. They have a really good e-permits software, which would really help with both the way we process permits, as well as the records management of said permits in the development department would be, would put us more in line with what other municipalities are doing. We talked about graduation banners during graduation season this year. The business support net, so the next, 1, 2, 3, 4 are economic development. So business support network, a living wage report, digital meds campaign, and business breakfast are some, none of them are huge projects, but all projects that could support economic development. And then we have, of course, a zero-fee tuition. This, I put it on here as having a cost only to show council, but likely that, depending on what council's decision is, there are reserves left to draw from in order to pay for that. The rebranding of the CTC, if that's something the council chooses.
Just real quick, the zero fee, we carried over from last year.
Last?
To this year?
For 2024, yes.
Great. So is that still an option, obviously?
Yes, there's still some left. Correct. Yeah, the only thing is, we decided for the tuition only, but there's a larger expense to education, like wages, and we didn't, that is coming from our operating, like from the taxes, but the tuition itself was budgeted to come from the reserves, correct? Yes, yeah, yeah. No. Youth Advisory Committee, Reconciliation Cultural Diversity Training, those are both repeats from last year. And then we have 5% COLA adjustment for autoscope staff, organizational-wide training, those are human resource projects. Fire, we have a fire department records management system. It needs to be updated, or a new one, I don't know, can't remember if the old one is going out, like it's phasing out, or if it's just time for a new one, but I'm sure we'll get more information about that. From communications, we had talked about, oh, I misspelled annual. We talked about an annual report. That bugs me. We talked about an annual report. And then, of course, we're trying to improve everything surrounding our emergency response, and part of that being a crisis communications plan. So that's in there from communications. And then I am the culprit here with the biggest ask, and that is to implement a new financial software, which we, we don't know 100% what it's gonna cost, but it is an expensive project. Unfortunately, we don't have a choice. So I, that's the unfortunate part. We have to do something. We have to go somewhere. So we should be getting a much more in-depth plan here in the next month or two. And so by the time we do actually bring it forward to budget, we will have a more concrete, obvious, concrete numbers for that. And then the last thing is budgeting software. We've talked about it a long time. But with switching anything to a new system, even though it's gonna be 10 times better, it still takes time to do that, and we haven't had that time over the last few years with just the finance department being just really, really at capacity. But I'm really hoping that we can find the resources to actually implement a new budgeting software. It would really help the team, and it would save so much time rather than doing it through Excel, because doing it through Excel, the way we do it, it's just, there's so, I have to go, I spend so much time making sure there's no human errors and that the 10 different spreadsheets all, they all link to each other and that all of the numbers are correct and no one's changed anything. And so it just takes a lot more time. So having a budget, budgeting software, I can almost guarantee you it would save, I think the annual costs are about 15 grand. I can almost guarantee you it'd save $15,000 a time during budget, which is great. But anyway, that's, we've talked about it, but I'm hoping that to actually bring something forward very quickly here for budgeting software. And you wanna mention something?
Just, but if you're gonna jump into operating, I'd like to. So just on the operating, instead of going through each position, I think, you know, this was the overall ask from all of administrations. So what you'll see come back in the fall during budget time is a focus on our internal operations. So if our external operations, meaning public works, parks, and stuff like that, right now, it's very tough to provide the level of support that they need from finance and HR and IT. So when we come back in the fall, my advice to our team here in administration is to, I know we can't ask for all the employees that we would like, but my advice is to strengthen our internal core so that we can provide the necessary support to the operations. So you'll see, you won't see all these come back in the fall. We're not gonna do that. You'll see a couple of key positions being asked for.
Okay, perfect. And then just maybe before we move along, you've kind of went over a little bit of the operating projects list, and we've talked a little bit about the request list for the positions. Are there any questions there, and what are councils', I guess, expectations today? So I think what the intention was is that this was kind of a preliminary, you know, highlight of what the budget may look like. We haven't talked about, you know, maybe some other priorities and things like that. So is council looking at asking, kind of breaking this apart and asking a lot of questions? Are you looking at delving like deep into it today? Or are you just looking at accepting this as information, and then when the fall comes is when we'll get into the questions? And I just ask that because it's quarter to 12, and do we wanna spend two hours on this, or are we going to spend? I just kind of wanna know where we're at for time-wise and how we wanna break it down. So maybe I'll go to you first, Councilor Evans, sure?
Yeah, in my mind, I'd just look at this as taking it for information, general overview of sort of the next, as Wally mentioned, sort of a five-year sort of roadmap here. And I think we get into it deeper once the priorities have been established and what we're looking at in the next, you know, coming budget or the next two budgets or whatever, then at that time, I think I'd dig into it deeper. That's the way I see it kind of rolling out anyway.
Yep, sure. Tom, what are you thinking?
I agree with Councilor Evans is that the information's provided. It looks fine. We will have to spend some time on it, but I'd see that in September, October.
Okay, okay. Colin? Oh, so like, are you wanting to delve a little bit deeper into these, ask some more questions? Kind of, you know, or are you okay with waiting till the fall, and that's when we'll have the, you know, a better explanation of each of the projects and kind of the yes or no's and things like that?
Yeah, I think with what Wally said there, you know, we're not expecting to come, you know, with everything here. So I think it's probably best to just wait to see what they have to pare it down to.
Camilla?
Yeah, no, thank you. I agree with that. Of course, if we aren't gonna get all of these back as requests, then there's no point of going through each and everyone now, trying to figure out that process. But just a comment about the overall budget process. I was just wondering how we're gonna pan that out. You know, we did budgets several ways for the last few years. I was wondering if, you know, the way that I liked was that we kind of discuss the trajectory and the part that we're gonna take, and then give it to the administration, and then they know what they need to work with, and then they kind of bring back.
So like, our priorities are kind of like expectations? Is that what you mean, like projects or?
Right, and on top of that, you know, about the tax increases and all of that, we kind of give the ballpark number to them so they understand where we are coming from, rather than, you know, everything comes here, and then we decide what it is and all of that, right?
Yeah, and I think that's, yeah, I think we discussed that that's kind of the road that we'll go down for sure.
For this time, okay.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and just a comment too, is this gives you a chance to see if there's anything that's not on here that council wishes for the next budget season? Also gives you a bit of time to think about that and bring it forward to admin so that we have enough time to actually create a plan for the budget. And so we'll definitely have another check-in before budget starts where we're gonna talk about perhaps projects that council wants to see. It's just so that it gives us enough time to actually get a number and a plan together to bring to council. And then, of course, yeah, we talked about, talking about priorities, but also the tax and then working with that number. So kind of the balance between the two, where you give us an amount that some, you'd like to see, but the final edits will have to be council's responsibility. So have kind of a balance between those two approaches, if that works.
Yeah, I think so. And then, yeah, like you said, we can also, of course, we can't foresee what assessments will come in, but I think to get a little bit of an understanding, like when we're thinking about that number and everything of, there is that potential to either increase, decrease, and, you know, based on everyone's assessment. And I think in that comms piece that we talked about going out, right? If we're kind of, yeah, doing it a little bit differently. But I think overall, if we accept this for information today, and then we'll kind of get into the heavier conversations in the fall. When are we anticipating that we would start, like a typical time, or are we aiming for September or?
October or November.
Oh, okay.
We'll come up with an actual timeline, and then we'll send out calendar invites and everything. But I'd imagine it'd be late October or November.
Okay, okay. And this is just kind of what administration and everyone's been talking about now and kind of everything that's on the radar, so we have a heads up and we'll go a little bit further. Did you wanna finish with the capital or?
Yeah, I'll just briefly go over it, yeah. Some of the funding hasn't been worked out yet. Like I had incorrectly put the CPO vehicle as being partially funded by the county, and that's not, that's not correct. And then we don't know 100% what is being funded by grants. We're working through some of that, what we're planning to debenture, but this is a rough estimate. And then we also don't know what's gonna get approved, right? So we have to work out through some of those final details anyway. But we have the Maraw Pond expansion, we talked about a bit, a snow dump. Then we have the traffic lights replacement program. So we, some of our traffic lights, the light boxes, I think they're called. I don't know. Shelley, we'll have to talk to it further. But they're going like obsolete, and so we can't no longer replace some of them or repair some of them, like we can't get parts anymore. So there's a plan in place to repair or to replace them over time, and we're hoping to get a grant for that. The six-inch high lift pump, Shelley needs a pump at the reservoir, right, Shelley? Raw pump. And the aerial fire apparatus ladder truck has been on the plan for 2025 for quite a few years now. It's getting up there in kilometers, so it's time to look at buying a new one. And of course, this is the big one, is the wastewater treatment augmentation. That's a big price tag, but also we're betting on a lot of grants, a big portion of it being covered in grants.
So when you say big portion?
60%, 65%.
80? 73.33?
Fingers crossed, yeah. And I mean, that's just, we just, we absolutely need that to do this project. So sidewalks program, so starting to replace bigger chunks of our sidewalk to keep up with the maintenance and not to have, well, address all the dangerous areas and then start replacing chunks of sidewalks in the town. And the plan built out, that we're gonna go in more detail on, is to, it's built out so that all our sidewalks are kept at a certain level of, all the time. And so Ken and Shelley will talk more about that when we get to budget. Range Road 73 slope failure, that's thought by the Ring Road.
Cooley.
Not Ring Road Cooley, yep. We have the two maintenance programs for main valves and maintenance holes, hole lining, new CPO vehicle, and then under Parks and Rec, we have some updates there. ECDC backyard renos, the bridges at Ivan To, resurfacing pickleball courts and CTC pond deck lighting. For common services mobile equipment, we have a greater lease buyout and a capota purchase that's on the budget. And then we're asking for a backup generator if we move our ECC for emergencies down to the CTC, given more space, the space works better to set up an ECC, especially if it were a type of emergency where we're running our day-to-day at the same time as an emergency, like the county was last year. They did have ports of the county that were doing normal operations, so they still had staff working, whereas all of us were evacuated, and so we were just all out there working. So if we think about an emergency where we might have our ECC activated, and we might have staff there, but there's also staff here doing day-to-day operations, it'd be very hard to hold our ECC in our boardrooms, which is where they are right now. So the plan was to set them up in the CTC instead. And so one of the things that we would need is a generator, a backup generator. So we are looking for grants and such for that as well, but we did wanna bring it to council on budget as well, just to make sure that we're prepared. We had CTC landscaping that kind of came out of last year's council's discussions. Greenwood swale, it got deferred last year. Controlled crossings, it's just one of those that we are looking to put them in a few more places to make the town more safe. And then we need to start planning for future road upgrades. And so what we wanna do here is spend some money to do all the investigatory, wow. Investigatory, is that a word? Investigative work, it's not a word. See, you could've told me.
Putting together words.
Investigative work, yeah, creative, yeah. So that we can, we know exactly what each road will take. Does it need infrastructure, or underground infrastructure? Does it, you know, is there lines that need to be moved, all that kind of stuff? And then move out to our five-year plan of replacing roads that are in the highest need. And so starting it so that we do have exact amounts for the years that we're doing. We saw with 50th Ave, like, we were just about to pass budget when we deferred it because we weren't sure, and so we just wanna avoid that kind of... because we weren't sure, and so we just wanna avoid that kind of stuff. So that's what this 300,000, 500,000 is for. And then sanitary trunk upgrades, we've talked about sanitary trunk, like that there is, you know, 10, 20 million dollars of projects that are gonna have to happen in the next 10 years. And this is the start of that, just to see, okay, what, is there a new technology? Is there something new, like, maybe it looks different than we had expected? And so just to get a more concrete plan to build our five, 10-year plan. And so that's what this 300,000 dollars is for. So we're expecting just over a million dollars from LGFF that'll fund some of these projects, which is really great. We have some from CCBF. And then, of course, we're looking for some funding, a lot of funding for the wastewater treatment augmentation. So I guess, in general, right now, as it sits with this, we would be looking at almost 2 million being funded by operations, by our, yeah, by our operations, and all the rest would be the reserves, debentures, or grants. And that's everything for capital.
Perfect. Okay, I'm not anticipating any questions, as we discussed. Well, those will come in the fall. This is just kind of a introduction to what the budget will look like this fall. We can start thinking about any other priorities or projects, and what that tax increase may or may not look like, just to consider with, now that we have a better look at what the operating and capital expectations are. And I guess I'm looking for a member of council to make a motion to accept this as information. Counselor, well, let's go to Counselor McGee. Counselor Evans has been throwing them all out.
Our budgets as information.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? I'll ask all in favor. That is carried. That wraps up our decision items. We will break for lunch, and when we come back, we will jump into closed? We'll jump into closed after lunch, then. Okay, perfect.